And good evening, welcome into our monthly meeting of the Amherst School Board, I should say what seems like our seventh monthly meeting of the Amherst School Board this month of some various capacity. It is January nineteenth, we'll call to order at six o'clock tonight. Want to thank everybody that's in attendance here in person. We will try to get through tonight as efficiently as possible, not that we normally don't. But with the roads in the snow that's coming in, want to make sure that everybody has a chance to get home safely before the worst of it comes. That is not a threat by any means to keep your comments and questions short, feel free to ask what you need to ask, but if we do want to make sure we're doing everything else as efficiently as possible. So thank you to our administration and our building leaders for being here tonight per usual. As we get started tonight, we will start off with public comments. I will open it up for a public comment in the room as well. As virtually, if you are signing on virtually and you'd like to participate in the public comment tonight, you will have three minutes to state your case. After we begin, after we get to the pub, the virtual part of it, you can raise your hand, enter your full name in your profile, turn on your camera, say your name and town of residence when speaking, and then you'll have three minutes to make your public comment. So with that, I will open it up officially in the room here if there's anybody that wishes to address the board. Seeing none, we will move on to the second item of our agenda tonight, and that is the consent agenda. I will take a motion from the board to approve the consent agenda as is. I will make that motion. I have a motion from Jason, excuse me, from Josh, I'll take a second, there we go, I have a second from Jason. Any topics of conversation for the board, any items one through nine that you'd like to address other than the unanticipated revenue, which I'll make sure we address before we do our vote. Okay, so we do have a substantial number of unanticipated revenue that was donated to the schools from a variety of sources. We have yearbook programs and picture programs at Clark Wilkins and AMS that totaled around four thousand dollars. We have the Blackbaud Giving Foundation Box Top for Education, and then the Amherst PTA with a variety of donations for disc golf, small bass guitar, preschool playground equipment at Clark Wilkins, and library games at Clark Wilkins as well, that totaled about twenty-one hundred dollars from the PTA. Always thankful for their support, and certainly thankful for the other programs for their support of the schools, all those funds getting to go to various activities in the school there, what we would call unassigned so to speak, so the building leaders could make do with those, how they best see fit in the actual school. So with that, I will call a vote on the consent agenda as is tonight. All in favor? One, two, three, four, 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 none against today, Terry Beam will be joining us, but with the weather, she's taking it cautious on the roads that she doesn't end up in a ditch trying to fight Amber's cell phone signals to join us remotely tonight, so she will be here at some point. So moving right along to our third agenda item, I will turn it over to our superintendent, interim superintendent of schools, Steve Chamberlain, for an update on our middle school construction projects or facility projects, I should say.
Sure, thank you. A little bit going on in this area, so the first project we're going to talk about is where we are on our goal of making it watertight, watertight for roofs and also watertight for unit ventilators, because we've had a couple of those leak. So we are, as we head into this project, just a reminder that the Amherst School Board voted funds to do the study to prepare for this, and we procured, we're using EEI and Bandwell to take a look at our roofs and take a look at possible heating solutions. And this has gone through the Amherst ways, I'm sorry, building and grounds. So just some things that have been done, we had some test cores drilled in our roofs to take a look at our insulation to see where we are, we've had a roof inspection. We've had engineers to review existing conditions, and we're also developing blueprints for an area roof that we don't have, all this in preparation for a comprehensive overtime changes a roof project. So we feel very good, there's, the plan is to, once we have the costing that goes to building and grounds, building and grounds will analyze it and work together and bring it back to the board for a decision, and we've already looked at three different options, different pricing levels, different length of times, whether it's ten, twenty year plans. But we were putting all that together in a comprehensive plan to come to the board. But for our roof and our unit ventilators, we are well under the, well involved in the phase project. And we'll have more information in the next month or two. Questions, and Victoria, did I miss anything on that piece?
I think the only thing that I would add is that the area of the roof where we're doing those cores is the original roof to the building, so we know that the building's fifty years old, it's a fifty year old.
True, and we will have, what's really exciting is to have a very long-term twenty, because we have some roofs that are twelve years old, it's still under warranty, so, but we're going to project out the entire roof transition for the next twenty plus years. Also connected to our facility project is some excellent work going on with our bathroom projects over at Amherst Middle School. In-house, we've been using in-house electrician to install some different approach to our bathroom work, including a hot air dryers for our students, the latest, greatest, high-tech dryer systems which are helping, and Kristen can speak to this, but we're doing a bathroom beautification project. We're increasing our, our time in our hallways and supporting youngsters, saying hello to people in the hall. And we've had pretty good returns since the break. And so we are taking a look at our bathroom pieces, and I've had the honor and pleasure to be on hallway duty a little bit and hang out with kids and say hello, say hello to a lot of kids, which is a lot of fun for me, so we're making project on that end at Amherst Middle School. So far, so good. Our last building piece tonight is, and we can talk more about this in non-public, but we are in the process of looking at a bathroom renovation at Amherst Middle School to ensure that every student has access to a private respectful space to do what they need to do. Currently, and projected, we have some student needs that are not available in our current facility design. So we are working with DEW, and Roger is the lead on trying to work on that, so you will be, what will be coming to you is a project. And they will either be funded through Fund Balance or through our Special Education Trust, this is related to specific student need, current and projected. It is the right thing to do for kids, it's a long-term solution that will keep students and treat students respectfully and with dignity as they take care of what are very private and very personal parts of their school day. And I can get more into that in non-public as it is connected to a student need, but we are looking at plans to renovate to, again, to ensure every student has dignity and respect as they take care of private individual things in our school. So those are the three areas of the middle school that we're working on watertight ventilators and roofs. Taking a look at our bathrooms, ensuring that they are maintained and treated with respect, and making sure that every student has dignity and respect as they need to do their personal items during the school day.
Okay, and pardon me if I missed it specifically, but regarding bathrooms, I know you had an update in your board notes for us this week, but I think it's good to share with the community. The situation in the Amherst bathrooms, I believe the etiquette behavior problems that we had for a while in October, November, December, those have started to subside with some of the remediation that we've been doing, anybody want to elaborate on that?
Yeah, we are, the plan that Kristen is doing this in multiple ways, and I really respect her approach, meeting individually with kids, doing a little bit more care and have ownership for the students to ownership for this, and doing some interesting designs from locker rooms to lights around mirrors, increasing supervision, I appreciate the entire faculty and staff taking on this together as the more time we're in the halls and connecting with kids there and providing supervision, it works. And so I think we are in the right track, and we also are replacing paper towel, the issue was we had a significant number of times where over we were, paper towels were being used to plug the toilets and causing, you know, plumbers to come and leak and spill basically unpleasant sewage to leak out in our schools. So we've, we've combated this in positive reinforcement, increased supervision, changing in our direction. I think we're in the right thing, I think we're doing the right thing, connecting with kids, and so far so good on the return since we've been back from break.
Okay, any other questions from the board on those items? Any other comments from the board on those items? Okay. All right, so now we will move into what is essentially the crux of our meeting tonight, and so to start things off, I will invite a couple of guests that we have here tonight, Matt Wheaton with DEW and Brad Prescott with Bandwell Architects. I was going to have them sit next to Terry, so Terry may have to get comfortable and squeeze in with Matt and Brad. Actually, Terry, if you want to come down in the end, Matt and Brad, if you don't mind jumping on the end two seats there. So Matt and Brad have been working with the Amherst School Board in the district for the last, I don't know, fifteen months, give or take. Probably if you're monitoring that, probably closer to two years now at this point, since we were working on the original school bond project that was proposed last year. So we wanted to take some time tonight because for two items, number one, we, this is an item that we can't talk about enough, the talk about the need for the schools, what we view as a need for the elementary school project, and then why it's important for our district now and in the long-term future, and then the second item we'll touch upon tonight with our Ways and Means Committee in-house is the items that we just haven't had enough time to talk about because of the late-breaking nature of when they were improved. And that is our two tentative collective bargaining agreements, one with the Amherst Educators Association, and then one with the Amherst Support Staff Association as well, so we'll talk about those, we have teachers here and we'll have Ways and Means here as well to discuss that in depth as those two items were both ratified on the night of our public hearing a couple of weeks ago. So we just haven't had enough time to really break in and kind of get into the details of what we were looking to do and what we accomplished with both of those bargaining units. So Mike Akilian is here with Ways and Means, I will invite Mike to the microphone if he'd like to have a seat there, so he can be on mic, we do have some Ways and Means members that are joining us remotely tonight, Steve Frady is one of them, he is joining us via Zoom. So we will open up the microphone with those folks here as well, representing Ways and Means, other Ways and Means folks are battling weather and will get here at some point as well. So to start this off, we have just a quick recap of the facilities project to where we are and why we're doing what we're doing tonight. So focusing first off on Article Twelve, which is the building project for Clark Wilkins, the new elementary school, and then after this, we'll get into the two teaching contracts as well, so Ways and Means had a meeting on Tuesday night, they did take an initial vote at their meeting on Tuesday night, but we did not have any representation from either Bandwell or DEW at that meeting, so we wanted to certainly give them a chance to have, answer some of those questions tonight. Get them some more information and potentially give them other things to think about as they continue to go along in this voting process between now and when everything has to be finalized for the ballot. So diving into the school, Matt and Brad are here, we thank them for coming down tonight, so a quick recap of this project and where we're at. We started off this project about five years ago, but the last couple of years, we've been engaged with Bandwell and DEW, that started in twenty twenty-one. That was following that lengthy, you know, three or four-year process, master planning process, working primarily with La Valley Brenzinger, along with board members, district leadership, and then members of that Joint Facilities Advisory Committee. So when we contracted with Bandwell, they were charged with further really assessing and diving into the program needs off of our initial designs with La Valley Brenzinger, and then with DEW onboard, they refined those designs, really started to bring down the scale of the initial project to what was on the ballot last year, and then what we're putting back on the ballot this year specifically for Clark Wilkins, and they were paying attention to the size of the structure, addressing needs conservatively at the elementary school, not going with nine or ten classrooms that were in those original designs, going with a more conservative estimate of seven or eight with some flex space to be able to move rooms around instead of having what we thought would have been considerable surplus after those initial initial plans came out with La Valley Brenzinger. And then DEW was brought on to provide the actual costing or the cost estimates as best we could for those designs. Tonight with Ways and Means here, you know, they'll have the opportunity to ask questions of Matt and of Brad, the experts on this. And then we'll also have a public-style comment for folks that are here tonight, if they want to engage any further questions with Brad and Matt as well. They'll be able to ask those questions as we go through tonight, particularly in regards to the elementary school. So before we, we do open up the floor for questions with Ways and Means and then with the public, we do want to start off with Matt and Brad with one recurring theme that has come up a lot with Ways and Means, but we've heard it from other folks at public hearing and in some of the conversations that we've had in the community is what are the actual cost differences between adding on to Wilkins to some capacity and then building new, which is the item that we're proposing in Article Twelve this year. Lengthy point of discussion for many years as we've gone through this project, both at JFAC and at the board. We've all been involved in those meetings, members of the board, particularly Victoria, I've certainly sat in some of those as well. So we do want to give a chance for Matt and Brad to be able to share some of the knowledge that they've given us that we may not have relayed very well in some of those finer points of the differences between a significant add-on renovation and then building new that we're proposing. So I will turn it over to Matt and Brad, if you want to hit Matt on the front of that, that microphone will turn on, the green circle will come on. If you guys would like to start off with maybe a high-level overview, talking about new construction that we're proposing, after we've had our conversations with you guys versus additions at Clark Wilkins, what's cheaper, what are the benefits of each? And, you know, La Valley Brenzinger gave us some rough cost estimates, you know, how realistic we can expect for those to be if we were to do something like a major renovation add-on as opposed to a build-new project that we're proposing.
So I did prepare, thanks, I did an, our answer for
Please do.
About things. I plan to go through the questions you asked. And I'll pause at the end of each one, if you want. Can you just continue? I can do that, and then questions at the end, how do you want this to be structured?
I think if we just have you go through, Matt, and then everybody here, if you have questions, just take notes on the questions you have, we'll let Matt get through what he has, and then we can open it up for questions after, I think that'll be more efficient way to do it.
Okay. So I think to start this conversation, this really has to be sort of an apples-to-apples comparison. So if we're, I don't know if I've mentioned people there to really sort of do a kick the can with a couple of variations versus an all-new build, right? So I think the conversation tonight is is an apples-to-apples comparison with between additions and renovations and new construction. Because there are many variables that we're going to cover here. So the topics that Brad and I are planning to sort of talk about are new construction versus additions and renovations, which is cheaper. Second topic would be why would La Valley Brenzinger, who, as you mentioned, this is a few years ago, say that a renovation slash addition is all as much as a new school for Clark Wilkins? You can cut down that. Could the community renovate Clark Wilkins for less? You'll see, and then what does the construction market look like in twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four? Are any of those topics not appropriate?
I think they're all fine, okay, I think that's exactly where we need to go.
Okay, so before beginning, Brad and I talked about these topics before, so these answers, while I may be doing most of the talking, Brad and I sort of talked about these in advance as Bandwell, the architects really understand the programming, the code analysis, the needs assessment, et cetera, that was all coordinated by Bandwell. As DEW is the contractor, we can talk about numbers and sequencing and that sort of stuff, but this, this conversation really is sort of a joint venture between the two parts. So new construction versus additions and renovation, which is cheaper? So at face value, renovations are less money. But the devil is in the details with the renovation. With the term renovation. So to build one anywhere USA school versus renovate that same school, the renovation will be less money. The question comes down to how significant is this renovation? So there's a, we generally use these, not anything an industry standard, but there's a heavy renovation concept where you're moving load-bearing wall incredibly invasive, full mechanical electrical plumbing repairs or replacements, et cetera. There's a medium renovation, which you give a wall or two here or there, it's select mechanical electrical plumbing replacements. And still some, a lot of finishes upgrades as well. And then the light renovation, which by its sounds, you know, it's paint, floor, vanishes, tiling, vanishes, replaces the light fixture one for one, fairly simple stuff. So each of these are very different, a lot of different efforts and different costs. So site work is another consideration. A lot of times we think about renovation, we're always going to innovate, but there's also outside stuff, so really how much outside work is there going to be, and how much does there need to be, that also weighs into renovation costs. So quickly into additions. Square foot cost of a new school, people have all seen numbers that people throw around in the research online, the typical school cost. Square foot cost for a new school versus a square foot for addition, the addition will prove to be more costly. Almost one hundred percent of it. So if you have numerous small additions, those additions could be five times the cost of a regular addition. And it could be even greater for a new build, because it makes sense, it's, there's multiple small projects sprinkled around, less efficient. So the numbers go up. So moving on to the next question, why would La Valley Brenzinger say renovation slash additions almost as much as a new school for Clark Wilkins? Well, to start, the building systems at these schools are at the end of serviceable life based on the capital needs assessment that was, that was done, which immediately sort of indicates a significant renovation would be necessary. There are more unknowns when renovating. Here, you know, you know less, so therefore subcontractor bids, which we did not receive subcontractor bids in this effort, but when we do allow subcontractor bids typically reflect unknowns. It's easier to understand new or what will happen, what will I encounter, so. An elementary school, which would include the pre-K through grade five, will require the heavy renovation. Insert these new, not new program, but insert the program into this existing space would almost immediately trigger a heavy renovation classification. And when investing money into a community and in these educational facilities, you're addressing sort of the current needs, but keeping sort of the future plans flexible. The new designs that are looking at twenty-first century learning spaces, marrying those with older building structures don't always align. Which then you spend money to make today's learning environment work in an old building. Wilkins currently shares space for lunch and PD. So there is a space that needs to be new, which one will be? The existing storage is limited. Speculate, vacation space is limited, numerous other spaces are limited. Therefore, we have to sort of add these spaces on, and you have to distribute those spaces equally throughout. So the reason I say that is you can't do a light renovation in one section and then shove all the storage, all the speculate, all of the others new functions into an addition. You have to equally distribute this stuff throughout. And then there's not enough teaching space with how many new students. So additions are required, the library is too small, expansion required. Existing structure is CMU or masonry, so to move these load-bearing walls is not that simple. Renovations take longer, there's more moving, there's more phasing, noise, distractions, all of which impact the learning environment, et cetera. Probably all reasons that La Valley Brenzinger may have considered, which drove those costs up. So could the community renovate Clark Wilkins for less? Our opinion is make. I know it's not what you want to hear, but, and that's a big make. So but a sizable addition will be needed without question. So to answer this question properly, really, you'd need Bandwell and others to study this again. The teachers administration also to help redefine the project, then document it again. And at that point, a construction manager can price. Only way to know because of the programmatic impacts that will surface during the study. Examples of this are the library needs a thousand more square feet, or whatever room needs a three hundred square foot addition. Or just move that CMU load-bearing wall two feet so we can get the required twenty kids per classroom, those those programmatic needs, when you put them into the existing space, is not always that simple. So complicating factors to consider when, when thinking about a renovation. Your site is currently confined and there are not a lot of options. With a tight site and larger additions, this will have some impacts, which needs to be studied. Other required program outdoor spaces could support the school. The driveways, the wetland impacts, the student play area, et cetera. Clark Wilkins will face major or heavy renovations to an unreinforced masonry building, CMU building. And so what that means, it's going to trigger seismic design that you have to insert into your existing building, which is doable, we've done it before, but it's slow, tedious and expensive. Renovations are slower, which will drive up costs. So I did some thinking about this, and so I think the renovation could take up to a year longer due to phasing. It's just slower, you have to work through the school a little slower. And so let's just pretend there's fifty more people on your campus for a year. At an average of seventy dollars an hour with the burden included in that. Some are less, some are more, you're not going to get a plumber for seventy, but you won't hire a laborer for seventy either, so that's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year per employee, so do a hundred and fifty thousand times fifty. And you can start to understand the magnitude, and that's without material escalation for a year. So with addition, I'm sorry, this is taking so long. So with additions required, you'll likely end up with more gross square feet than with a new purpose-built facility. So why is that? Renovated space is much less efficient than a new building, so you're either building more in the addition than you would need for a new building. Or you're going to sacrifice programs to keep costs down, which then you're sort of behind the A-ball again. Swing space will have to be built or rented, if rented, that's wasted money. You cannot simply vertically or add addition vertically over one-story wing. The second-story addition can happen, but you essentially bridge over an existing one-story structure impacting, and no structural loads impact that existing facility. Which is expensive. And then also remember, you're building over the lower level, it's still in a heavier renovation, so essentially all you're saving is the old walls, the concrete floor, because you're still needing the roof, the windows, the empty, the chemical plumbing, new doors, relocated wall, et cetera. Don't save too much. And when you're done with the renovation, some of the same old bones are still there, so you still have a fifty-year-old structure in place. So with all that said, DEW has done both renovations and new, and we know the impact students and staff have during construction. We see it every day. We care about the education students receive and the staff and the community as well. If the renovation is the selective path, it will take longer and it will have an educational impact that I can't put it out of. So the market in twenty twenty-three and twenty-four, what does the construction market look like? CBRE is a global real estate investment company that said the construction index, cost index forecast was forecasted at fourteen point one percent increase year-over-year in twenty twenty-two alone. They're projecting twenty-three and twenty-four to be in the range of two-four percent in addition to that value, which is on par with historical averages. The Consumer Price Index or CPI for twenty-three is expected to be in the three to four percent range. The labor demand and contractor backlog still remains high, and the confidence in contractors remains steady. The construction costs are not likely to go down without a major recession. So in summary, as the project as designed and envisioned to date, is supporting the needs and vision of the students and staff as confirmed by the Administration Committee and Architects. The design team and administration balanced the needs with efficient use of space that will meet the current needs of the population and also the less classrooms required. And the core spaces sized for future population growth. The facility was looked at and priced with a fiscally responsible yet durable building material, protective investment was considered. And then also the site was designed to have approximately seventy-five cars pulling the loop and get off of Boston Road. Now, I'm officially sorry to take it so long, but that's what I, that's what I prepared for tonight, happy answering.
So I'm going to add a little footnote. We were, we had the advantage of getting the questions in advance, so we can have them for about a day, it's really helpful to have. Because it allows us to have a better and informed answer for some of your questions, which are rather complex. This is a complex project with a complex program on a complex site. That being said, you know, there's a lot of detail behind this, we're happy to answer what we can. There's volumes of information, but we'll try to we'll try to pull from our memory banks all of the detail that came with this. So thank you for your time, and I want to thank Matt for summarizing our So thank you for your time and I want to thank Matt for summarizing our long conversation.
Well, and I appreciate it, Matt and Brad, and, and thank you for, for all the work in that, not only what you've done so far, but. Coming down tonight when we're not under contract and still assisting with this project, knowing that. You know, we're, we're going forward with it from our plans last year and, and you guys have generously donated a lot of time to help us get to this point from last spring to, to this spring as well, so. With that, I will, I will open it up, we have another Ways and Means member here, Rick Barnes is with us, so we have four total in attendance between in person and Zoom. And I will open it up to the floor, starting off with Dwayne, Mike or Rick, if you guys have questions in person. Steve Frades is listening as well, Steve can raise his virtual hand if he has any question. We will promote Steve to a panelist, so Steve, we just ask that you turn on your camera while you're asking questions, but we'll be able to start that tonight. So Dwayne, Mike, I'll turn it over to you guys.
I just promoted him as a panelist.
Thank you. And I've seen the agenda, so I apologize.
We, we, we moved, we put the pedal down tonight, so we want to get out before the snow.
We had created after our meeting that. We can always vote it. So in terms of having a set of questions, we did not prepare. Of questions. To keep on developing to listen to discussion on the teacher contract.
That will be next, we will be doing that as well, but we at least wanted to, to open it up for facilities, I know that there were questions that you had leading up to the vote. You know, you voted on the contract for the teachers as well the other night, I know that there was at least one abstention, but there were some votes in there as well, so. We did think that some of the questions that you had already asked us, that, you know, getting a live answer in person may have been beneficial as well, so we at least wanted to present that, even though you did vote the other night.
Just for a little clarification, I do believe that we discussed at that Ways and Means meeting that they would be here to answer questions and the Ways and Means members. Were directed to contact Rick and Rick would contact me with questions, but then I was told by Rick that you guys had chosen after the meeting had ended not to follow that procedure.
So there, there are questions, but. Not only the question about the wing, adding the wing unnecessarily. To add a wing versus building some reading, putting some different top, both questions about that. And some of the other questions were. Take a look at new land space that's already, which you guys.
I have a couple of thoughts. Ways and Means have been meeting since August. You've been talking about this since August. We would welcome you folks at any of those meetings with, with another, extremely. My own clarification of this, which we understand pretty well. We think you all did a pretty good job of explaining what a new building to accommodate. Both Clark and Wilkins students can look like. The issue we've been raising for quite some time included things such as, what if you maintain the true school? Clearly, even on tourism of both schools, there clearly was space needs at Wilkins. We all agree that more space was required, but a second scenario, we said we'd like to explore with people. Was what if you kept Clark? What if you extended Wilkins with a wing, not affect the building, which would require all new. Boarders and funding and all of that, if you added a wing to provide the space to accommodate the students that are there now, what are those costs that they're raising? We raised a third scenario, which was. The Sannean School Board at one point said, we have extra space. And so there was a potential opportunity to reconfigure existing space that already exists with another scenario. For a different configured educational campus for the entire town. He said, what analysis and detail cost that you folks done around something like that, so we would have. Three choices, maybe they'd be go be lost, you know, maybe they're. And I, I find it a little unsettling that a day before you meet our vote. To be recorded, now you guys are invited in to talk with us. So everything you shared about. The cost of renovating the building that you were talking about was to try and create the same space necessary. To match what you already designed, that has never been anything we've talked about. We had three scenarios, this one, sort of the top of there. Merge building, new building, sixty-four million, hundred and eighteen total cost. But we raised other options and said, where's the analysis of other, other ways of thinking about this? None has been brought forward, and I feel a little badly that you've been brought out here to reaffirm something that we understood quite well, we understood the merits of it. That's not what the issue we're, that's not what we're selected in the favor of the one in favor of the six against. So those are my thoughts.
So I, I will just counter, I don't want to put Matt and Brad on the, in charge of responding to that, because that should be more directed towards us on the board. I think that, you know, I think we're using similar, we're using different terms for the same thing, but if we did an addition, no matter how big that addition is. I think those principles are still going to be the same, and Matt and Brad can comment on this, even if we built. Just a smaller wing to be able to, that's connected to the building, which I think is what we all consider an addition to be as opposed to a separate building. And that's partly for the security factors, we have separate buildings now, nobody likes them because they're portables and they sit in trailers out back and, and they are what they are. So anything we would do as an addition would be connected as a wing, but I think Matt and Brad, even if we do that, changing. It's still going to require major overhaul to get in there and change all the mechanical, electrical and plumbing to match what that new addition would be, correct? So it doesn't necessarily change the scope, whether a new addition is fifty thousand square feet or seventy-five thousand square feet. Cost may be a little bit less, but it's still that overall philosophy is going to be, that square footage wise, it's probably going to be more expensive than a new building. And I don't want to put those words in your mouth, but from what you had said, that seems to me that that doesn't change the scope of any project.
Yeah, I. With respect.
Yeah, of course.
What we were talking about is a smaller addition, we weren't talking about making up all the same square footage. In a one floor addition. We believe that there are space needs at Wilkins that could be addressed by a smaller wing. What these gentlemen said is you were, if you were building the same square foot space, either new or renovation. It might be that renovation is cheaper, but we're talking potentially about a much smaller square foot renovation than. Trying to, trying to create all the square footage that that particular building was looking for, and we have no data. Right, we kept asking, saying, where is some, it doesn't have to be even in the way to mirror the detail. That these fellows did for the one that you elected to vote. But we said it ought to be more than the back of an napkin and not as much as what these guys did, and we've seen nothing. So our vote is basically to say, in fairness to the taxpayers and the residents of this community, until. More homework is done on some of these other alternatives, we just don't support. This one option that gets put on the table for a hundred and eighteen million dollar expense over thirty years. That's the long and short of it. And I'm not sure if there's anything these fellows are going to say to us that addresses the issues that we've been raising for five months.
And, and I'm not sure that there's anything that we could have done in the last couple of months that, that have that full analysis, there's just no way for us to get that full analysis with. Even if it's fifty percent, and Matt and Brad can probably speak to this, for us to get. Rough cost estimates, so let's say bring fifth grade down to Clark Wilkins, because I do think that needs to happen. With the elementary programming and with the space restrictions and issues that we have in A M S. I think that's a better use of our space to bring fifth grade down, so let's say we cut a, an addition that's fifty thousand instead of seventy thousand for rough numbers is, is just a philosophy here. Adding that wing, we're still adding, getting in there, having to replace all the M E P fixtures, because you have to connect the building and make it one loop unless you want to run separate H Vacs, which doesn't seem to be. Smart to me, so we're still getting into the unknowns on that. And, you know, to, to get a detail, not a detailed plan that we have, but something that's halfway there, I mean, what are we talking time wise? And it's, it's certainly not free to do something like that.
That, that effort does take months, not days.
Correct.
Maybe proportion is, is helpful for this conversation and stopping if I get too far in the weeds. Matt loves it when I get into the weeds. But just, let's just throw some big numbers around for a minute, right? Basically, what we've been talking about and what's been proposed is a, is a hundred and thirty-four thousand square foot addition. On the existing site and keeping nine thousand square foot of your existing school. Okay, we'll call it the new school scenario for the purposes of this study. Just throwing around what, what you're talking about, and these are very general square foot, please don't. Don't stick me to the wall, I get the number wrong here, but. Basically, you've got about a fifty-five thousand square foot Wilkins school there right now. If you kept the twenty-seven thousand square foot school, Clark school intact, you think. And you said, okay, just move a fifth grade down. One has to assume that probably programmatically is pretty close to. The range of taking out, taking out maybe. I don't know, thirty-five thousand square feet of the gross program of the new school. Design in terms of size, not the design itself. So that leaves you with about a hundred and ten thousand square feet of gross program that you have to satisfy on the Wilkins site. Is the fifty-five thousand square foot building, so really you're talking about doubling the size of the building on that site. Whether that's a two story or a one story addition. You know, is a, is a relative impact. I just, I just want to give a sense of scale, so when we talk about a smaller addition. For it to be truly a small addition, I, I think with this, it's a complete reexamination of the program. Instead of just keeping out maybe, you know, keeping. Keeping our pre K, but those are some very rough, off the top of my head thoughts, just based off of this, this, so. Obviously, we can get deeper, but you know, at Vanwell and I know P W is the same way. Our philosophy is that this is, I'm not pushing agenda or building onto this community, that's not what we do. But here to help keep you the best information.
Steve Frades, do you have any questions you'd like to address with Matt or Brad?
I do not, my, my, my comments have been expressed.
Yeah, mute Steve, you might have to.
No, he's not on mute.
Hold on Steve, we're trying to get your audio up, it's not coming through properly.
Testing one, two, three.
Okay. Want to try again?
Try it again, Steve.
Testing one, two, three.
You hold your mic in front of it. You're good, Steve, go ahead.
Testing one, two, three.
Yeah, we got you.
Okay, I, I think my thoughts have been expressed. I, I think that there's a need to quantify the cost of some alternate approaches. Adding in the. Long term expectation that. Growth will be negative as opposed to positive in terms of enrollment, long term, although we'll see. Periodic bubbles of enrollment. But in the long term, we'll, we'll never see the enrollments, the historical enrollments that we've seen. We should be focusing on what does it take to optimize in a downsizing environment? And, and I think we really need to spend the time to assess accurately. An approach that might be different than the, the complete, the rebuild of a school. And, and I don't know what that answer is, but I do know that we're not the only school in New Hampshire or the United States. That's faced with the costing increasing as a result of downsizing of enrollment. And we need to be creative. Architects had need to be creative. They've developed plans historically, always in a growing environment. And we're going to be faced with thirty or forty years of shrinking. And that has to be built into the plan. How do we shut things down? How do we be flexible? How do we save money? Because face it. When we have arguments about the fact that we're going to grow and we're going to attract and there are going to be students, that isn't the case. I mean, births are down, migration is up, but people aren't all going to migrate to New Hampshire. Births are down, enrollment will be down.
Thank you, Steve, Moosie has seen you join us tonight as well, so I saw you move up, I take it that means you might have a question or two, if you wanted to speak into the microphone, please.
Sure.
Moosie Usaini is also on the Ways and Means Committee, so thank you for coming down and I will turn the floor over to you.
Thank you, community, this question for either Matt or Brad or both. I would be interested in understanding what. Assumptions you use and what requirements you are given based on which you have come up with the performance that we are. Now, how did you arrive at the need for a hundred and thirty-four thousand square foot?
Right, everybody can hear me.
If you put that closer in front of you, it will touch your back.
Okay. Wow, okay.
Tricky.
So the process that we came to as a foundation for this effort. Was to review the programmatic educational requirements of the district as well as the enrollment requirements and the enrollment projections. This is done in very close cooperation with the district and, and our leadership. We actually don't consider the program to be a Vanwell document, we help facilitate the dialogue. But again, the program, it's a program, political, it comes with a community. So what you see in terms of the colorful designs that we come up with is only a manifestation of essentially the menu, which you have come to us and realized that you want.
There's a part for that.
Well, yeah, we help, we help, Matt's, what Matt's pointing out is that there's a lot of public education. Regulations and requirements that kind of pay states demand, and of course, we have to help give guidance on what you would be able to say with them. Or what sort of variances you want to do with the client, or. And you need the building to be more economical, but still serve their curriculums. But the curriculum really does come from the beginning, all we can do is sort of say, we go to systems. And that really worked to be other than for six thousand square foot gross program. Which is an estimate based off a net program of the multiplier. As the, that gross program, I think it's, it's probably appropriate to point out or emphasize one of Matt's points, which is. And I was mentioning this the other day. When we take a net program that you come to us as designers with and say, well, I want seven classrooms to say. Say there are thousands where each just worth of ten classrooms, many easy for numbers. Let's just say it's a ten thousand square foot addition gross. If that's a ten thousand square foot set of gross program. But we're going to be doing that as a renovation in a building versus that program being in a brand new building. The amount of space that that takes up is, is less efficient. To, to quite a large degree. So what we find is that you end up adding fifteen to twenty percent of those building in, in construction. To do a renovation versus, again. Just to satisfy the same program. So what we, we've been talking about in the renovation, if we talk about this project, it's a hundred and forty thousand, forty seven thousand, it's actually a bigger project. There's a torch in the renovation, one of the waters in the project, I just want to kind of emphasize that, kind of be part of our, of this.
And that, that, that speaks to the philosophy of your, your approach, right, as the framework that you deploy. About it says, but I was asking, what, what were the specifics of which you came up with this one, what six K solution? So is it, is it, is it a document that?
Oh, I'm so sick. Um, it's publicly available.
It's, it's on the JFAK site. Um, I can send it to Ways and Means directly, but it is on the JFAK site under uh, the recommendations for elementary recommendations and the program sheet for Amherst Elementary School. So it goes through uh, room by room, size, amount of classroom and reasoning.
And, and then your final submission, is there a traceability matrix that department? I'm sorry, you're very. What? Traceability matrix?
Traceability.
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 For understanding. So all of the requirements, and you have come up with a solution. How each requirement matches the solution of what you introduce.
Well, um, so I'm gonna.
Hey, from the, from what I'm looking at on the program sheet, it's set up in, in a way where if we're talking about a kindergarten classroom, it tells us the size of the, um, like the V O E requirements. Talks about the size that's required, the amount of classrooms that are required, what that total, uh, it's net square foot. Is that what NSF does? Yep, net square foot. Um, it talks about the level of the build of, within the building where that is required to be. And then there's comments, um, that are administrative comments.
I applaud that for my long answer. I didn't realize that you hadn't seen the actual educational program. This, this very exciting four-page spreadsheet, um, kind of looks like this. And I'm not going to read it. I, I promise, but just to give you a graphic. So every single space is outlined. Do we know exactly how big the spaces be and how many of those spaces there are in each site? Um, and then that is a full of the bar and, um, in terms of freezing the fat, we literally go through the plan and just make sure whatever is on, we, we create the program, once it's approved by the school board and the, uh, we create that as our main, this is our requirement. So whatever's on that ends up on the plan.
Thank you.
Sure, I'm sorry. I realized it was that simple of a, a little long-winded there. Sorry.
Okay. Uh, any further questions from Ways and Means folks? Dwayne?
Yes.
Thank you. So.
So in short, what's driving this is the need to be kindergarten to Wilkins School. Part of what's driving this. Kindergarten to Wilkins School and also bring fifth grade down from the middle school to the Wilkins School, which will obviously create maybe a large, uh, need for a large facility. If maybe decides we don't want to do that. What does that mean for education? Does that suggest that all of that? The level of education that we would expect to be delivered uh, at the middle school and at the local school, uh, class school, uh, does anything change or, but what does it mean?
Yeah, speaking, speaking probably out of turn, uh, would you like to do it, Steve, or would you like me to?
You can start.
I'd say, I think it, it's, in this, it's, uh, if this is voted down, I think it's going to depend on a couple of different things. If it fails, fifty-nine to forty-one percentage-wise, I think that means we have some momentum. We made good progress from last year. Maybe it's fine-tuning and it's tweaking and we can come back with something for a future year. These are all hypotheticals. I think if it's thirty-five to sixty-five or whatever the percentage was last year, and it's the same, um, same answer that we get la- is last year, then I think we're looking at solving space needs in, in different ways. So we leave fifth grade where it is. We continue to, to go through with the situations we have at the middle school. We use our capital reserve fund to continue to fix needs that we have that pop up, funding that to, to work on building needs. And I think the honest answer, Dwayne, is, is we're looking at ways to solve space needs and, uh, we're talking probably portables as a potential solution. So I think that you're looking at some options that people have criticized in the past a little bit and maybe they're, they're eyesores now, but I think that those are the solutions to be able to get more space and be able to um, increase some of the ways that we can fit program needs. So I think there's a lot of different avenues we can go down and those are conversations we have to have, but immediately those are some of the, the top things that I think about that, you know, we're, we're looking at doing again. And, and to, I don't know that what's driving this is not bringing fifth grade and kindergarten to Clark. That's a, that's a benefit, I think. Uh, and having one school does create some efficiencies for us, but that's not the reason we're doing it. The reason we're doing it, or maybe that's the reason the building is this big, because we can see the option of, of consolidating those into a, a better elementary school environment. But I think it's space needs and, and the aging systems that are driving this, and that's sort of a um, tangent, tangential benefit to, to doing a project like this is being able to reset the elementary school as well. So I, just to clarify, um, you know, that what's driving it, how you started that comment, so.
You know, part of it, but the, uh,
Now you're on. You're just not as live as I am.
But the, um, there's an educational philosophy here to, or is there a philosophy? Does the philosophy change? Having all the students in one place versus distributed as we are right now. Um, and I can only think of two other examples, tell them, because the K three-five, uh, eight hundred and so uh, with nine hundred, I don't know what it's still for. The other, which is the K three-four, uh, which has over a thousand elementary students. So that would put us in that class. I don't know whether any of the schools in the state, uh, of that size, but I, I guess what I'm interested in, not only the systems, uh, the physical plan itself, but the educational philosophy was are we at a disadvantage as an opportunity? Are we disadvantaged, um, staying as we are? There's, is there some argument that fifth graders aren't, aren't well-suited to be in a middle school? I don't know. I mean, years we've been doing it, but now.
Sure.
Yeah. And I, I, you know, there are also concerns with moving kindergarten, which would be an ideal, um, site, towns like a lot of them expected have their own spot now being incorporated into this, this larger facility. Um, I'm more concerned about the, um, quality or the educational philosophy. Will our children suffer? So.
Sure. Fair question. Definitely.
Sure. Thank you. Um, I'll jump in just with a couple of things that we're struggling with right now at Clark Wilkins that would continue if the new project, um, didn't pass and there wasn't a solution, um, to some of these challenges. Right now at Clark School, our kindergarten students do not have a library, an art room, or a music room. Um, P E, library, arts, and music all occur in the multipurpose room. We have to wheel up the lunchroom tables and we conduct P E basically around, uh, shelves of rolling bookcases. Um, so that's a concern for me programmatically for students. We were teaching them about the joy of a library experience and how we become a, a, a young reader and, and how exciting it is to get books and to engage in some of this. We don't offer that to our students because we do not have the space to offer that to students. Um, and if we're in one building, we would have a larger, um, multimedia center that would, you know, engage all students and be appropriate for kindergarten roofed grade learners. It's not quite the safest situation for a P E teacher with young five-year-olds to navigate, um, you know, bookcases in the inner space while just teaching them how to play games and engage their peers, um, and do, and be able to follow the rules appropriately. Also, just efficiencies there, um, you know, we don't have a kitchen, so we're, we're bringing lunches over to that building, um, and students, we're asking staff members to drive personal vehicles with student lunches in it between two buildings to be able to feed the kindergarten students in our program. Um, right now, we don't have a tech lab, tech on the park in our building. We continue it to expand. If I just need one more classroom, which this past summer, we needed that one more classroom. We had to move special education space into the conference room. Our teachers collaborate behind the stage and a storage base right now at Wilkins, and there isn't a prospect of that changing, um, given our current situation of needing to reach classrooms to educate students. Of course, we provide, um, kids with the greatest experience of possible training, having amazing staff that work hard every day to do that. Um, but yes, it would be better if we had a tech space and a multimedia, um, library that allowed all of our students to access it. Um, you know, our, our P E teacher also teaches in that multipurpose room too. Um, so half the day, um, well, two hours of the day, we have lunches going on, so we're not able to offer um, the extensive programming that we may be able to offer if we didn't have the simultaneous lunch and P E situation in that space. Um, I think there's tremendous amounts of potential for improved educational programming for students in a building that is designed to accommodate the sheer number of students, um, and then also um, the level of programs and the, um, types of instruction our teachers are able to offer to students. Um, so, you know, those are few small snippets of, of, of how I could see the space challenges currently existing, um, and how those, you know, likely aren't changing, right? So we're going to have to face that, whether, you know, even if this past, this year, I'm still faced with that situation for next year. Our staff are still faced with that situation for next year. Um, but, you know, I think we have to figure out, you know, a long-term situation solution then, um, you know, based off of like what we said off here to share, you know, if this is what we're facing, then we have to look at it.
I'd like to respond to that. Um, we've gone on tours of, of this group. Nobody is suggesting the status quo should remain in place. Right? I'm not saying get on the desk where you can, that will be raised for quite a long time is, are there other options that would improve the equality of space and use the space we've suffered to overfeed those kinds of difference? Uh, for something less than a hundred and eighteen million dollars. And I find myself in this awkward situation of architects, well, like doing architecture on a slide. So, so option, and all we're thinking is, you can bet on one option. It's like bringing one superintendent candidate before anybody thinks he or she did it, right? We don't think that's appropriate. We think, I mean, several people to choose from makes good sense. All we've been saying quite a long time is it looks to us like there are a couple of other options that could also be explored. Why weren't they explored? We were told we only had a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to do an analysis. Our resort was if you thought you needed more money to flesh out some of these other options, maybe another hundred thousand dollars to have these both priced out as a multiple option. Instead of just coming forward with one option for a hundred and eighteen million dollars, perhaps the town would have easily ponyed up another hundred thousand dollars to make sure whatever option was chosen would make sense. So all we're saying is good on yous of coming up with you know, the high level, hundred and fourteen thousand square foot renovation. What about the others? That work hasn't been done. We believe it should be done. This was the citizen vote or at least, that's all.
I just want to make sure, I, I know that, that you all know this, but for anybody who's watching, I just think it's important to clarify that the work that Vanwell and DEW, um, was charged with, by the time they came on, we had already done the master planning study. Master planning study was done through Vali Brenzinger and we did look at various options. Um, when we chose to go the route of building new, we did not spend additional funds looking at the other six to eight options um, to get those priced out to this level. So I just think it's important, I know you all know that, but I think it's important for anybody watching to understand that court has done, court and administration have done due diligence in, in our thinking and in our thing.
In, in the, in that case, if I may ask, uh, if there is a question, if uh, other options were identified, what are the, a comparative benefit cost analysis for all those options and not, uh, attached?
So during the master planning process with Vali Brenzinger, we brought it through a certain point. So while we identified multiple options, we didn't price out specifics of different options. That just was not part of what we were doing. What Vali Brenzinger did was they presented us with three high-level options. And those were kick the can, which meant simply, these were their terms at the time. It meant simply replacing the systems within the building without space additions. The second was renovate refurbish, which is replacing the systems and adding a, a separate building, but in, in terms, it's an addition. And third was to build new. When we had those three options, which were, um, like the renovate refurbish was um, the dollar amount was figured out by industry standards of renovating school buildings at the time. When we had those three numbers, we looked at the two numbers, the different groups did, the different committees and boards and everybody, administration, we looked at those two numbers and said, renovate refurbish and build new are very close together. They were something like two million dollars apart. And we said, they're correct. We looked at what we would earn in a new build versus in a renovate build. And there were more positives for the educational situation for the students and for the safety of the staff and the health of staff. So we went with that direction and when Vanwell and DEW came on board, that's what they came on board with. We were on that direction. Um, and we have not pushed back since we got on that board with them.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Okay. Any further questions? Oh, I'm sorry. Jason and Terry had something. Terry, if you, Terry, you want to go first? I know you.
Sure.
Sorry, Jason, we'll get you after.
That's fine. Maybe I couldn't speak.
You also speak. First, welcome. I've missed you guys. And I, I felt like we spent so much time together and we were all besties and, and then I just haven't seen you all year. Um, thank you for reminding me some of the things that, I do this at work all the time. I'll be working on something current and I'll forget things that I knew, right? Like, oh yeah, I remember that training back. I, I forgot all that I used to know. So coming in here and some of the details is really helpful to me because we've been going out and speaking with our community and we've been getting very good questions. And so thank you for giving me additional details and reminding me some of the things that I have known and that it's a great refresher. So thank you. Um, the takeaway for me that was true then, it's true now and it will be true going forward. And I'll say this quite honestly and with no equivocation. For the money that we want to spend for the most bang for your buck to have the programs that we need and the spaces that we need and that we need to go forward and give our community what they deserve for the future. We stand behind this plan. This is our preferred plan, what we think is the best value long-term for money spent. We will have flexible spaces that we can use both now and we can have some capacity for growth. And if there is some decrease in our population, it's not going to be huge. It would be, we would still be using the space. Let me just say that. We would use it in different flexible ways. We have it built in that if we had to sacrifice like some communal spaces for teams meeting together, instead they've been classrooms. We have the ability to add classrooms more easily if we needed to. We have a lot of things built into this plan. They give us forward-thinking choices. I lived with a mother who sometimes got caught in a what-if loop. What if, what if we this, what if we that, what if we that? And then we would make a decision and then for the next three years, oh man, we should have never sold that house. We should have just rented it and been long, long-distance renters. When now it's worth this like, but you made a choice and you went forward, right? At some point, we had to make a choice and say, what do we believe as a collective group? And again, this was not just the board. It was not just members at the time on JFAK. It was over several years and over several things, and we did look at multiple things and researched them with educated people advising us to the point that we felt we could make a choice and then stand behind that choice. So I do understand the frustration of getting to the end and saying, I would love to have more what-ifs so that I could feel like I made that choice as well. And I understand that. I do. I understand the emotion. But what you've tasked us with doing and voted us into office for is to explore the what-ifs and make a decision, and we have. I stand behind it. I think it is absolutely the best long-term investment to make into our educational system and into our town. And so while I understand the questions and I understand the emotions behind them, and I think they're good questions and they are absolutely questions that I promise you have been asked and answered. And this is where we are right now. We would very much like this to go forward. We believe in it. We can speak to it. I could talk in excruciating horrifying detail that you do not want right now, but we do stand behind it. And while I appreciate continuing to have thoughtful dialogue, I do think that first we have to go forward with the choice that we have made and then we will reevaluate. If the voters do not back us up, we will have to reevaluate and see what our next steps are. But for now, this is absolutely through extensive, just, and I would like to thank, as I have and will always, the JFAK over time, over the last six years, the JFAK team that has had varying membership with all sorts of expertise and with all sorts of amazing questions and, and just the millions, not millions, but the thousands of hours that have gone into into this for people mostly volunteer, um, but who come from very educated places and from, um, the richness in our community of the expertise that we have, the people who've given their time. So I want to thank all of those people and to. So I want to thank all of those people and to not negate the work that they've put in. Because someone at this point says, but I wasn't in the room. You're right, sometimes I wasn't in the room either. But I trust the work that was done and I a thousand percent stand behind where we are right now.
Jason. Good. Quick question for for Brad and and that when. To the fifty to sixty percent level of costing, obviously what we have now is everything's been costed out to the best of our ability, knowing. Um, what we know and without getting subcontractor bids based off of the project that we gave you and and funds that we had to work with, et cetera. How common is it to, to what Mike was suggesting, having those other options costed maybe half of that percentage point that. How common is that in a construction project in school? How often is that done? Is that something that? We should be looking at for for future projects presenting a a bevy of options to the public. How, I guess I'm curious as to what the best practice is for that. In turn, and then what it takes to come up with those plans for each individual option. Cause I don't want to ignore Mike's Mike's thoughts on that.
So every every community is different, so and they all approach these these challenges in their own way. Um, what we commonly see, um, if we're walking into a project like this from, you know, ground level. Um, nobody's drawn a line, nobody's. Starting with zero, uh, is quite common, um, to do uh, multiple options and scenarios. We try to get it down to about three of them. And then we do some very high-level conceptual budgeting on those three options. And then, um, the community therefore after that makes some valuable statements, what what are the best to down? Based on the very high-level numbers. Um, and then moves a little bit more narrow to to one option which then, um. Our construction managers can get a little bit deeper into their, do their spreadsheets, which they love, right? Yeah. Um, and then we we get numbers that there's still potential, but they're more accurate on cost numbers. But yeah, usually we we start with, I mean, I. Probably get the trouble of this. Um, so in Goldenbrook, I did nine options. Um, conceptually. Um, as I drew the plans myself. Uh, that's why I remember that so well. Um, but in the end, it came down to three and very quickly moved to one. Uh, which is the school that you you saw. Uh, it's quite a large school and it's a completely vast.
And in my uh, spiral life, I I too was an architect like Brad before I smartened up and realized that I should go to construction, but. Sorry.
I'm not that smart, that's okay.
Um, but but with with all the options, when you go through these, you end up presenting. Right? So it's there's there's the education program that's developed, we're really the first thing, people start talking about this, I don't care about this. Was talking about once you, I want a lot of data, right? This three ring visor starts to formulate what you need to be. Pull out all the problems with the facility and the shortcomings of the facility, the educational needs of the facility. You pull that data out. But you pull that data out, um, and then start to formulate your vision. And that vision sometimes does come up with nice plans, which when you're. But then it's rolled out to the community. We talk about pros and cons of these. You gather community uh, feedback. It goes back to the committees, then to the board. You end up settling or sipping down the end of seven one plan. And and this was the plan that we looked at, um, but it sounds like in the, albeit, uh, La Valley Brenzinger. Um, pursuit, there was that sort of sipping of ideas that were there, sipped it out. Identified the best course of action that was selected. And uh, and this is where we are today.
So each of you. Thus now, so you come up with these options, you take it up to the community. Right? And really what we're saying is. Three options have not been taken up to the community. One very well thought out option. We're not complaining about. This option, you don't think it's a large option, you think it's an expensive option. It's the Cadillac option or the high-end. And all we're saying is, the the community. ought to see a couple of other options. Right? Not of the same sport. Right? And and I think the second option and the Victoria talked about. Was you build a separate building. Right? And he said, okay, we understand that if you build a separate building, you'd be completely separate mechanicals and boilers and air conditioning and all of that. That's not what we raised as a potential option. It was build an addition onto what you have. We know that a lot of those. Um, you know. Yeah, hypermechanical. Our end of life, but we'd resize those anyway to accommodate a larger. Uh, facility, right? And all we're saying is, give us something that says. Here's a cost range, be something like that. Not not duplicating the same square footage, smaller than P Clark. And then the third option was. We have spacing different places that have been offered. It's existing states, it's not based to you. Was there a real serious effort to think about that, both on the education point and across the employment? And we haven't seen that either. So all we're saying is, a lot of homework was done on one. We think the the community deserves to see some additional homework. And it may turn out that this is the right thing, it's after all, but for us, the way in of raising the need. Without seeing two other options. Six of us are saying we're not.
I just, um, it's not so much of a response from the last moment. Some good narrative was put behind the process that happened before Vanwell, Vanwell. Um, to assist the community. Um, I can talk a little bit about what our charge was. Find what it is. But I know that a lot of work is done, um, because we did see one joint, uh, joint out. Um, but we were charged with this design of the building. Has to look at the building, uh, and the master plan. Designed, done, and try to look. Terms of suggestions that we could make. For a more efficient design and a more efficient program. Um, to. Uh, make suggestions for a good building that that was also cost effective. Um, on the sites that were available or identified. Um, so even though we were charged with a new building on the Wilkins site, you're actually in. But it's technically an existing building. I know the the building this stays is very small portion. Um, but the point being is that we we really, um. When we were looking at this as a project view, we didn't look at it as, well, we're just going to wipe this site clean and. And do a brand building. What we looked at was, what's here where? What what's here that's an asset that's appropriate, um, and fits within the program that's been identified by the educators? Um, and that's what you see in part of the US. But it's only a context from the moment that we want to do it. I don't want to claim.
And I'm glad you did that, Brad, and I don't think anybody here is more than like fifteen percent of blaming you guys for this, so. You're you're off for that, but now maybe it's down to five, but thank you for that. So. Um, with that, I I do want to keep us uh, a bit on task to get to our next topics of discussion. So Matt and Brad, thank you very much for for coming down. Um, we appreciate it and make sure you guys drive home safely and hopefully we'll be in touch after uh, March fourteenth. We will one way or the other, so, but yes, hopefully it's uh, it's positive news, so thank you.